Buddy, uh, Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here and present.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reason of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Alright, thank you. Well, we have a Hunger Action Awareness Day proclamation. I was wondering if Councilmember Barksdale could read the entire proclamation, please?
Thanks, Mayor. Whereas East King County cities, including Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, recognize adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each resident. And whereas food insecurity occurs when individuals or households lack reliable access to affordable nutritious food. And whereas, with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent business and school closures, food insecurity has almost doubled in King County. And whereas food needs were one of the most common reasons this past year for King County residents to call seeking assistance with social services. And whereas Latinx, African American, and Pacific Islander populations are disproportionately represented among callers seeking food assistance. And whereas we commend the food banks, emergency and hot meal programs, and hundreds of volunteers working with our cities, local faith organizations, and social service agencies to stem the rising needs. And whereas we encourage the Bellevue City, Bellevue community to donate or volunteer at a local food bank or human services partner agency and help fight the ongoing local problem of hunger. And now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the 30th of October 2020 as a Hunger Action and Awareness Day in the city of Bellevue, and strongly urge all residents to join area food banks in sharing what they can to support our neighbors who are hungry during this difficult time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alright, we're going to approve the agenda. Tonight, we're amending the agenda to add an item under the city manager's report, as well as an item under other ordinances. Do I have a motion?
You do. I move to approve the agenda, amended to add one item under the city manager's report, updating the council on the weekend protest, and to add one item under other ordinances, resolutions, and motions to consider Resolution 9833 ratifying and confirming the civil emergency order of October 24th.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight, there were seven speakers signed up. However, one of the speakers has withdrawn. So with that, I will start with the first speaker, who is Paige Spicer. And Ms. Spicer, if you could raise your hand, I am not seeing you in the list of attendees. Okay, I still am not seeing a raised hand. I will move on to the next speaker and circle back. The next speaker, Cynthia Cole. Ms. Cole, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Cynthia Cole. I live in Lake Hills. Um, last Tuesday, a friend found a flyer posted in a Bellevue neighborhood about a community action event planned for downtown Bellevue on Saturday, October 24th. I looked up the group on Twitter and found their posts. This group, known as N Seattle, Every Night Direct Demonstration, is one which has been breaking windows of businesses, starting fires, and throwing fireworks at the police in Seattle. N Seattle embraces what is known as direct tactics, including property damage, and advocates for the total abolition, abolition of the police. In their post, they stated, "It's time to go after evil capitalist Bellevue. Last I checked, our economic system is based on capitalism, which includes private ownership of businesses and opportunity for people to prosper. How is this a justification for groups like N Seattle to go on after, to go after our city and take over our streets because they prefer socialism or anarchy? I contacted one of the Bellevue City Council members, Jared Newenhouse, and found out he was already aware of the situation and had relayed the information to the Bellevue Police Department. I want to commend the Bellevue Police Department for showing up on Saturday night and ensuring the protests remain peaceful, peaceful with no property damage and no one getting hurt. Also, I'm commending Councilmember Newenhouse for his strong support of the Bellevue Police Department and public safety. Also, Mayor Lynn Robinson for the timely manner in which she did the emergency declaration, the civil emergency declaration. This is what council members are duty bound to do. I've read some comments on Facebook and Nextdoor stating that the police overreacted. Yet, given the history of this group's actions in Seattle, and after finding propane tanks and other objects stashed around downtown, why the heck wouldn't they have been prepared? It's being called, and is it being called, an overreaction because they responded in a way that kept the peace? The Bellevue Police did an excellent job, and their prepared response kept this situation from being splattered all over the evening news. Lastly, knowing what they stand for, I'm not sure why someone who serves, who marches with N Seattle would want to continue to serve on the city council of the evil capitalist Bellevue. Isn't this a conflict of interest? How could someone in good conscience take an oath to serve a city that's home to Amazon, Microsoft, Google, Expedia, and more while taking to the streets in a protest that's advertised as an anti-capitalism march? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Ruth Lipscomb. And Ms. Lipscomb, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello, Mayor Robinson and council members. My name is Ruth Lipscomb, and I live at 101 Cascade Key in Bellevue. I wish I could see all of you right now and that you could see me. Please consider allowing us to see you in gallery view at some point. But just to be clear, I'm a 58-year-old white woman who has lived in Bellevue for nearly 30 years. I'm currently also a participant in the Bellevue Essentials course, where I assumed I'd be learning in depth about how the city operates. Unfortunately, what I'm learning is not what you intended to teach me. I am seeing the narrative that the city is trying to project versus the reality, and the city is looking pretty hypocritical. For instance, last week, Chief Mylett spoke to our class. It was a mix of glowing praise for his department and fear mongering about a protest that was going to happen on Saturday night. I was, it was quite obvious who the chief had been trying to rile up, since the inflammatory notice about the protest was posted only to Nextdoor, not to Facebook, Twitter, the Bellevue Police Blog, the police, Bellevue Police Alert email system, which I'm a member of. And I decided to attend the protest to see for myself what was going on. I believe those of us who identified ourselves as Bellevue residents made up about half the crowd. And we were well briefed on safety before we started marching. Uh, the police drone that hovered over the crowd could probably provide you with the recording of what was said. The protest was peaceful, well organized, loud, and energizing, meaning it was exactly what a protest should be. There were organizers present at both the front and the back of the group, who helped keep us together and out of the way of the police motorcycles that passed the group at high speed on the sidewalks. When I got home from the protest, my husband was quite concerned, since there had been both robocalls and robot texts saying that downtown Bellevue was having a civil emergency. I could only laugh at that characterization of what I had just experienced. Why was there not the same level of concern for the Lauren Colp rally, or the groups that came from Eastern Washington and ended in downtown park recently? As a community member, I'm more concerned about groups that open carry than I am about groups that shout. Bellevue needs to take a long, hard look at its commitment to racial equity. I suggest you consider forming a task force to take the steps to dig deeper than you have into what truly makes a welcoming community. You're not there yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Barbara Chevalier. Um, Ms. Chevalier, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Alright, uh, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, my name is Barbara Chevalier. I live in Newport Hills with my husband and two young children. Um, and I first want to commend the city on their Vision Zero goal, um, and all of the actions that have already been taken to make our streets safer. Um, that being said, uh, this evening, I am speaking to note that there's a lot of work ahead. Um, and I'd like to briefly share my experiences with navigating on public transit and as a pedestrian in and around Bellevue. So even as someone who cares deeply about my environmental impact and would like to set a good example for my children, it's quite difficult to navigate both my neighborhood and Bellevue's wealth of parks on foot or via bus. Um, a main thoroughfare in my neighborhood, for example, doesn't even have a sidewalk for people who want to walk to our neighborhood shopping center or a new park, which means that my children and I can't safely travel to those places without a car. Um, a corner on the other side of the neighborhood near the Olympic Pipeline, which is a great trail, um, which provides interesting access to, um, a wealth of trails, is downright nerve wracking to navigate as a pedestrian because of the speed with which cars approach from 128th Avenue Southeast heading towards Newcastle Way. Um, lastly, several of Bellevue's finest parks, um, like the Botanical Garden, aren't really accessible by anything other than car. Um, and I would love to be able to enjoy those spaces with my children, educating them about using public transit and maximizing our time outside, but I simply don't feel safe doing so. Um, to that end, I strongly encourage the council to continue taking decisive, creative action in a timely manner, really as soon as possible, to achieve both the Vision Zero and environmental stewardship and K4C targets, um, that you've adopted to make Bellevue safer, cleaner, and healthier for all of us residents. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Hannah Floss. Ms. Floss, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Hannah Floss, and I live at 910 145th Place Northeast. I was disappointed to read on Nextdoor last Thursday, the framing that the city of Bellevue used to warn residents about a planned march scheduled for Saturday. The narrative used much more inflammatory words towards this Black Lives Matter group than it had to other groups that had held demonstrations in Bellevue recently. I don't understand the, why the city would use a platform like Nextdoor to send out such an alert. It has such a limited reach and targets a specific demographic. Because of this post, my husband and I decided to attend the march. We have attended several other BLM events in Seattle and Kirkland without incident. The organizers emphasized safety during the pre-march rally. We, they encouraged everyone to wear masks, including some onlookers who were trying to engage some in the group. They went over hand signals used while marching to communicate to everyone things to help keep the group together and to make sure everyone was safe. They made sure everyone had a protest buddy, so people who came alone had someone else looking out for them. Once we began marching, what struck me the most was the excessive and intimidating police presence. It was by far more than I have ever experienced at previous events. There were motorcycle police driving quickly up the sidewalk, which I found quite dangerous. We were certainly a spectacle, as Bellevue had advertised our presence well, but everything I experienced was peaceful. Loud and colorful language does not, is not like, is not violence. I don't understand what prompted the civil emergency declaration, but it was effective in supporting a false narrative that BLM protests are violent. It also created a perfect platform for the Bellevue Police Department to be the savior of the city. This was a peaceful protest that is supporting this nation's First Amendment rights to free speech. I will be following up with the city council and Chief Mylett for answers to specific questions I have, but I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns on this platform. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Heidi Dean. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Wait, thanks so much. Hi, council and mayor and everyone who's listening. Um, I'm speaking tonight. I didn't prepare a speech simply because I wanted to hear what people before me would say. I'm honestly a little astonished, but sadly not surprised at what some of the previous speakers have said. Cynthia Cole had it right about the direct demonstration group. Um, I was part of monitoring that, um, and part of getting the word out to the neighborhoods, because there was concern that they would go out into the neighborhoods if they couldn't have their fun in downtown. I had people, friends of mine, who were downtown, live streaming. They did witness the protesters rolling up and unloading weapons, uh, from vehicles. That is the reason that there was a weapons ban. It absolutely astonishes me that people can deny that. Um, this group is known for their tactics, if you will, that are not peaceful. Um, and they were very clear that they wanted to be disruptive in every way possible in Bellevue. So I commend the way that the Bellevue City Council, the way that Bellevue PD handled this. I thank the, uh, other departments that provided mutual aid, and I support that. And I'd really like to know if we have a council member that continually complains about mutual aid from other departments. Why is that? I'd also like to know why we have a sitting council member, sitting up on the dais, listening to me right now, who would participate in this protest that cost the city taxpayer dollars. In the defense of the city, it costs businesses money to defend their businesses, and it was disruptive to the city. Why would you participate in something like that? Do you hate us that much? So I, I just, I want to say thank you very much, because Mayor, I know I've been hard on you at times. You did the right thing, and there are a lot of us that support your decision to sign that emergency order and to enact that weapons ban. We support BPD, and we just want our city to be safe. And I'm very disturbed by some of the things that I saw, some of our own citizens on Twitter doxing other citizens and trying to identify them to this direct demonstration group and call attention to them. I will be sending you, uh, communications about those people. It is disturbing. So with that, thank you again. I, I just can't even get over it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our, I'm gonna circle back to our original first speaker, who is Paige Spicer. If you, I see we have a telephone participant. If that is you, can you please raise your hand? Okay, it doesn't look like she has connected. So that is the end of our signed up folks for this evening. If there was anyone else, uh, participating in this meeting who would like to provide comment to the council, we have a few minutes left. Please use the raise hand function. Um, I see we have one raised hand. And Mr. Matt Miller, can you hear me? Mister, oh, Mr. Matt Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great. Thank you. Uh, good evening, council members. I, I wanted to speak briefly tonight in support of ordinance 6513, uh, reducing parking near frequent transit services. Uh, it's been more than a year.
Mr. Matt Miller, I, I am, I apologize for breaking in. That is actually the subject of our public hearing this evening. That will be at the later portion of our agenda.
I apologize.
No worries. Thank you so much. And I don't see any other raised hands for oral communication. So that is the end of that for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. I'm sorry we lost our first, um, speaker, but, um, perhaps they can email us what they wanted to say. So next, we have reported the city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Mayor Robinson, may I?
Councilmember Barksdale, yes. I'm gonna allow you a time to, for a monologue, because you were called out, uh, specifically, and I'd like you to have a chance to say something. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Alright, I'll keep it short. Um, so first, I just want to address the, uh, the facts here. So first, I was out there, but I was there to have my own personal account of the protest in that period. If I could, um, I just, I just want to note, you know, I think it's interesting that by implication, I was in some way deeply involved with the planning and, and activities that were, were related with the Saturday, with Saturday's protest. So, you know, I think it's an opportunity for us to, to discuss as a city, why that might be, and as a community, that why as a black person that is in the presence to observe and walking along the sidewalk even, not even in the street, that it might be assumed that I'm deeply involved with the protest. So as most of the council knows, um, a few of us have been trying to have a conversation around racial equity, and I, and I, and I just want to say, this really highlights to me how important it is to have it, because these implicit biases are problematic and troublesome. So I'll put the same call out that I've put out to everyone in virtual meetings that we've had as a city. If you want to talk about race or talk about racial equity, let's talk about that, right? I think it's misguided that you would show up during a council meeting to highlight something based on an implicit bias and make and not engage around racial equity, which is the core issue that we're talking about here. So if you really care about the community, feel free to reach out to me through my council email. Thank you. And let's stop spreading the lies. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Okay, city manager?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. Um, I have one item under the manager's report to bring forward to the council this evening, and as was mentioned earlier, it's a debrief of Saturday night's protest that occurred in the Seattle's Downtown Core. Uh, my intent this evening is to provide you some details leading up to and about the event itself, and to speak to the emergency order that was issued on Saturday, which you are being asked to ratify this evening. Um, just by way of background, we first became aware of the planned protest, um, in the downtown core last week, and what we learned was this, that the protest was planned for Saturday, October 24th, at the downtown park at 6:00 PM. And as you'll hear from both chiefs in a few minutes, the information we received prior to the event led us to believe that there was a high likelihood this could end up being a, a non-peaceful protest. Uh, so thus, prior to Saturday, in an abundance of caution, a lot of work went into preparing for a potential threat of violence to ensure the safety and well-being of the community, uh, including the residences and businesses, patrons and visitors, as well as the protesters and counter protesters. Uh, in, in preparing for the, uh, event, practically every city department was at the table helping out, including the fire department, city attorney's office, finance, the parks department, transportation, information technology, and our comms department, but most notably our police department, who were front and center managing the event. We also had a number of other jurisdictions assisting us from outside regional jurisdictions in the form of mutual aid. Overall, the protest ended up being a peaceful one, and now comes the city embraces. Uh, where no one got hurt, there was no damage, no altercations, and no one was arrested. Uh, but joining me this evening is Police Chief Mylett, Fire Chief Hagan, and our city attorney Kathy Gerla to provide more details on the preparation of and response to the protest, as well as to provide you with information about the emergency order. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Mylett. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, Mayor and council. Last Monday, we received information that a group that has been associated with violent criminal behavior was planning a protest in Bellevue on Saturday, October 24th. The information we received was that the group was going to gather in the downtown park at around 6:00 PM and launch their activities from there. Charmaine, can you put the slide up for me, please, the first one? Based on credible information we received from multiple sources, and the knowledge we had regarding the violent behavior of certain members associated with this group, we began planning for the worst and hoping for the best. This group has been very active throughout Seattle, to include the Capitol Hill area. We knew that members associated with this group engage in criminal behavior, which includes arson, property damage, breaking windows, graffiti, and other property crimes, as well as assaults on police officers, to include the launching of improvised explosive devices, throwing Molotov cocktails at police officers, and frozen water bottles, and launching fireworks at police officers. If you could advance the slide for me, please? As you can see, the Seattle Times published a story back in August, listing some of their tactics. In the paragraph preceding this one, it says, "Some groups of protesters consider themselves leaderless, resist media presence, and have evolving membership and tactics, making a full accounting of a group difficult. But for every night direct demonstration, the purpose is this, is the, is in the name. As one of the groups that has been organizing current protests, it embraces direct tactics, including property damage. Some who join the demonstrations are familiar faces from the CHOP or other Seattle protests." And then this paragraph goes on to list out the different types of things that they have, um, engaged in. "Based on the information that was available to me last week, I made the decision to reach out to our law enforcement partners and request mutual aid, because my concern was that we would not have enough resources in the city to address any of the violence that this, members of this group have been involved in. We wanted to ensure the safety for everyone in Bellevue, to include the protesters. We were fortunate to have multiple agencies respond to our request for mutual aid. In fact, the fire department also mobilized its resources to respond to the credible threats associated with this group. And right now, I'd invite, uh, Chief Hagan, uh, to share some of the information he has on, on prepping for the event. Chief?"
Thank you, Chief Mylett. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, uh, members of council. Regarding the demonstration, Bellevue Fire prepared for the event last Saturday evening by sharing information, uh, with the Bellevue Police Department, the fire desk at the Washington State Fusion Center, and the Seattle Fire Department. Fire and EMS were mobilized and staged in support of law enforcement, and we participated alongside them in a unified command. During the days preceding the demonstration, we received information from our colleagues at the Seattle Fire Department, and basically they shared with us, uh, that we should be well-prepared. They shared examples of situations that they had encountered in Seattle, uh, with over 60 nights of experience. They shared that in certain instances, they had experienced violence, uh, they had to respond to injuries to persons and perform emergency medical service, and they also had to respond to intentionally set fires. Like the police, we also had mutual aid from our neighboring jurisdictions, both pre-staged and a commitment to respond if needed. Fortunately, um, suppression and EMS resources were not needed that evening. Uh, thank you, Chief Mylett, for the opportunity to comment.
So was every member out there that marched in this night a violent individual? No, obviously not. But the core of this group that we knew was the core and the nucleus of this group were and continue to be. So in an effort to prepare the community for what we were concerned was going to be a violent evening, we took steps to get information out. Working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Bellevue Downtown Association, we, we were able to get information into the hands of businesses in the downtown area. Additionally, we sent out information publicly to the residents and the people living in the downtown corridor through an email chain that we have, Nextdoor, and the day of the event, Twitter and Facebook. We also hosted three separate information sharing sessions on Microsoft Teams. And lastly, officers assigned to the bike unit got off their bicycles and made personal contact with businesses along the Main Street corridor and some of the adjoining streets, where we believed, based on information we received, they would be a specific target of potential violence. It was quite apparent, leading up to the event, the days leading up to the event, that members associated with this group were engaged in some recon and intelligence gathering. Charlene, uh, Charmaine, can you, uh, bring the slide up for me, please? In addition to the, to the post on Twitter outlining the downtown park and an area adjacent to the park, some business owners reported suspicious activity, activity a day or two before the event that led them to believe that their businesses were being probed by this group. Additionally, businesses reported a day before and, and two days before, that they found stashes of potential weapons strategically located on their property. They had never seen that before. It was out of the ordinary, and some of these things included, uh, buckets of rocks, sticks with points on them, and propane tanks that were stashed in bushes. According to them, there was no logical reason for According to them, there was no logical reason for these things to be located where they were. Again, it is known to us that this particular group or members associated with this group. Will come in advance of a protest and strategically place things that they can use as weapons. And as you could see in the image before you, this group warned its members to avoid certain areas because they knew. Businesses had cameras and that the businesses would share images with the police if needed. Off to the left, all of this area is owned by Kemper Freeman is heavily surveilled. He will give the footage to the cops. When you leave, do not go in these, in these buildings. So, I, Mayor and Council, there's a lot of information that I cannot share with you publicly. It's not mine to share. It's sensitive information. But all of these things were contributing to me being concerned. That we were going to have an event in Bellevue that could potentially turn violent. So the day of the event, again, we started prepping and as the city manager said, this wasn't just a police department response. All the city departments contributed to our overall plan of action. And so we, we had, I felt at the, at the night of the event, enough resources. To deal with the worst case scenario, at least the worst case scenario as we knew it to be. We gave this group space. We gave them the opportunity. Before they even started gathering in the downtown park. We had some of the reports that some of the vehicles were parking in the neighborhoods. And they were getting out and gearing up. So in one of those cases, members of my police department, and I was out in the field as well with Major Tarantino. And we rolled up on one of, one of the group of people. And so I approached them, one of my officers introduced me as the chief of police. And I looked at the group and I asked them, I said, "Are you here to engage in any sort of destructive behavior in Bellevue?" And they didn't answer me. I asked them again, I said, "Are you here to start fires, break windows, or engage in criminal activity?" They didn't answer me and I told, and I said this, "If you're here to peacefully protest, welcome to Bellevue." We're going to provide you with a safe space to engage in your constitutionally protected right to assemble and raise your voices. But if you're here to tear up the city, if you're here to set fires, if you're here to engage in criminal behavior. You will be held accountable and you will go to jail. So I'm going to ask you one more time. Are you here to engage in criminal activity? And one of the members put his eyes down and he said, "No, sir." We're going to be peaceful. I said, "Then welcome to Bellevue. We're going to provide you with that safe space." And I was very sincere about that. So then the, the members of this group gathered in the downtown park where there happened to be a wedding taking place. Our goal from day one was to set a safe environment for everybody that was involved in this. Everybody that was walking in such a beautiful evening in Bellevue. People enjoying the downtown park, people eating in the restaurants. And the protesters themselves, as well as the police officers that were out there to serve the public. So as this was going on, in the days leading up to the event. I was in direct communication with our city attorney's office. Because, Mayor and Council, I did not want to wait. Until the windows started breaking, Molotov cocktails were being thrown. And dumpsters being set on fire to ask the mayor to sign a declaration. We had enough information that created that concern, but the threshold. And the city attorney will talk about this shortly, the threshold to initiate such an order is very high. And I knew that. And it wasn't until they started putting on body armor. Started putting on the gas masks, the goggles, and breaking out shields. Which again, is consistent with the video images that we've seen in Seattle over these last several months. And where then violence occurs, that I reached out to our city attorney. I explained to her what we had to include. People that were involved in the designing of improvised explosive devices in Seattle. Were seen, a vehicle associated with this group. And the person that was designing these things was seen in our area and specifically at the downtown park. And I can't go much further than that. Also, I would add that there was an individual that was identified as having a warrant out for his arrest. For rioting in a city in Oregon. And so while there may have been members eventually that were marching in this protest. For a legitimate purpose, there were also people here that had a long history of engaging in violence. So when they started doing all those things, then I asked the city attorney. To please contact the mayor and issue the, the order. And with that, I'm going to ask our city attorney Kathy Gerla. To address that and then I'll come back and wrap up my part. Kathy?
Thank you, Chief Mylett. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the council. So as you know, Saturday evening, the mayor did issue an emergency order establishing prohibited items. Which is often referred to, and I will refer to it tonight, as the weapons order. Before the mayor can issue an emergency order, she must first proclaim. That a civil emergency exists within the city. So that is why people first saw a proclamation of. A civil emergency within the city because that is necessary before the mayor can then issue orders. That are necessary to protect people and property, emergency orders. So the mayor does have authority under the city code to proclaim a civil emergency when there's an imminent threat. Of violent public disturbances, riots, unlawful assembly, or other hostile forms of action. So based on the information that was available, and you have heard some of that tonight from the chief. And it was evaluated by my office as well. There was sufficient information concerning the threat of violence. That it supported the mayor and she, at the police chief's request, did proclaim an emergency. And then issued the weapons order. So what the weapons order, it was not intended to do and does not. Is apply to people who are simply peacefully protesting. And it's not drafted that way, was not applied that way. What the emergency order does do is it provides a tool for the police that they do not otherwise have. To better protect people and businesses in the area. Where there is a threat of violence during the pendency of that threat. So the order prohibits people from possessing items in public places that can be used. To inflict harm to people or damage to property. If and only if the police determine that someone's possessing that item. With the intent to cause harm, either to people or to property. So that's the intent is that it gives the police a tool to seize items. That can be used to harm if the police determine that someone's possessing the item with the intent to cause harm. So as an example, light bulbs are listed in the weapons order. And if someone is, had just bought a box of light bulbs at the store and is walking down the street and happens to be in the restricted area. During the weapons order and there's no indicia of any intent to cause harm, this would not, the order doesn't prohibit them. From possessing those light bulbs. However, light bulbs can be and are used as weapons. So if the police identified somebody that was carrying a light bulb that was filled, for example, with some gas or other flammable liquid. And based on all the facts and circumstances, the police had probable cause to believe that the person was, had the intent to. Basically use that to inflict harm, start a fire, for example, cause property damage. Then what this order does is it gives the police a tool to confiscate that item. Before it is used to commit a crime. And without this weapons order, the police would have to wait until the crime was committed in that case and damage was done to property before they could. Step forward and seize the item. So, so that is really the, the main gist of what the weapons order does. The geographic scope of the order was crafted narrowly to be around the area where, where the police believe the threat to exist in the downtown area. And only in public places such as streets, parks, or sidewalks. It doesn't apply inside people's homes or their businesses. There was a question around firearms and what the order did or did not do with respect to firearms. And particularly, why, why does this order prohibit other things from, other types of items from being possessed? But doesn't prohibit the possession of a firearm? And the reason for that is because the state has preempted local governments. From regulating the possession of firearms any more stringently than the state does. So the city just doesn't, didn't have the authority, doesn't have the authority to prohibit the possession of firearms. However, the order does prohibit the discharge of firearms in the restricted area. And consistent with the constitutional right of people to defend themselves and, and defend others. And that is something the state has allowed the cities to do that is in the order. And there are also a number of other laws that are already on the books that regulate. And apply to the brandishing or discharge of firearms, for example, that the police already have available to them, even absent an emergency. That can be used. The, the order was provided through a variety, notice of the order was provided through a variety of means. Because the order creates a new law with new restrictions and new legal requirements that apply in the downtown area. It's important for the city to get notice out to people who may be affected by it. And so per the city code, notice was provided to the media and through a public address system and through a number of other. Systems in order to ensure that we got the notice out to people who might be affected by it. It was only, the, the order was only in effect for a little over three hours, only as long as was necessary. It took effect at 7:15 PM and was terminated by the mayor at 10:35 PM. At the time she terminated also the proclamation of emergency throughout the city. So that concludes my explanation of the order and unless there are questions, Mr. Miyaki, I will turn this back to you.
Chief, did you want to say a few more words? Yeah.
Yes, sir. So there was a, a comment that was made earlier that we treated this group differently than other groups that have protested in the city. And that is, that is not true. We treated this response and we developed our response based on the information that was given to us about this particular group's. Violent history. We've had a lot of protests in Bellevue. Especially over the last five and a half years that I've been here. This is the only time, other than the May 31 riots, that we staffed up the way we did. We've had Black Lives Matter protests where we didn't call for any mutual aid. We didn't have to. And we gave safe space. We had other rallies and protests, the Armenian. Community has been protesting for the last three weeks. And again, we provided the, the resources to create that safe environment. So what, what I look at are the results. So the results of Saturday's evening's response, there aren't any injuries to anyone. Public protesters or police officers. There was no damaged property. There were no broken windows, no widespread graffiti, and no arsons. There were no arrests, other than one person that was arrested for driving while license suspended. A safe environment was created for the public. Again, there was a wedding taking place at downtown park. Motorists, it was a comment about the motorcycle officers zipping by. What they were doing is they were getting ahead of the protesters. As they occupied the street in order to cut off the intersection. So they can enter the intersection without getting hit by a car. Businesses were, were safe. And the protesters themselves, there were, there were counter protesters present at different points during their march. And we were able to allow both groups to lift their voices, get their messages heard in a safe environment. When two, when you have the close proximity of two very different ideologies. History, at least my, in my knowledge. Leads me to believe that there's usually a conflict and it can result in violence. That didn't happen. This group marched until they decided they didn't want to march anymore. And we were quite, quite clear with this group. If you're coming here to peacefully protest, we're going to provide that safe environment and that's what we did. I want to thank all of our neighboring agencies that covered our streets while my officers were focused in the downtown corridor. And then also the agencies that sent resources to help us create that safe environment. And I also want to thank the mayor and the council and of course, Mr. Miyaki for your support and of course, the Bellevue community as well. And that, that concludes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Mylett and Chief Hagan and City Attorney Kathy Gerla. I really appreciate it. That concludes my report for this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much and very much appreciate the explanation, Chief Mylett and Ms. Gerla. Really, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. So we are on to a public hearing. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce this public hearing?
Sure, Mayor. Yes, in front of you this evening is a public hearing to extend the interim official control adopted by ordinance number 6513. With set reduced minimum parking standards in the land use code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service. Just by way of background, on May 18th, the council adopted ordinance number 6513 imposing the interim control. Official control setting reduced minimum parking standards. And to allow time to develop necessary code amendments to implement provisions in the interim official control. The city may extend the interim official control for an additional six month period. If a subsequent public hearing is held and findings of fact are made prior to each renewal. Joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, the Director of Development Services, as well as Trisna Tanis, our Consulting Attorney. For a brief staff report before you open it up for a public hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Ewan House, and members of the council. We are again here this evening for a public hearing to extend the minimum parking interim official control. We do have a brief staff report to provide and we are seeking council direction. To extend the ordinance at the conclusion of the, at the conclusion of the public hearing. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Tanis to provide the staff report. Trisna?
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, City Manager Miyaki. Let me just get my screen up here. Y'all can see this, I think?
Yes.
There we go. Thanks again for having us this evening to present this, this item to you. So as Mike mentioned, this is a public hearing item to extend the reduced minimum parking interim official control. The direction that we will be asking from council tonight is to hold the public hearing. And then following the public hearing to adopt the ordinance to extend the interim official control. The agenda for tonight, for this item, we will briefly explain the process for the interim official control. And speak about the components of ordinance number 6513, which is the interim official control. Provide a status and upcoming steps update to you. And then our recommended action, which is of course to hold the public hearing and, and approve the extension. So for the, I want to begin by providing a little bit of background as to the process for this interim official control. Council adopted this IOC through ordinance number 6513 on May 18th. Which per the Growth Management Act or the GMA, the interim official control is good for six months. The interim official control may be renewed for additional three month periods if a public hearing is held. So the public hearing tonight will satisfy the GMA requirement to extend the interim official control for an additional six months. Council may recall that the interim official control reduces the required minimum parking, 2.75 space per unit. For affordable housing and market rate multifamily housing. And to only parking required for employees and staff and visitors for housing for seniors and people with disabilities. These are when the parking, when the housing developments are located within one quarter mile of a transit stop providing frequent service. Frequent service means at least two times per hour. For twelve hours in a day for affordable housing and four times per hour for twelve. for twelve hours in a day for affordable housing and four times per hour for twelve hours in a day for multifamily housing and housing for seniors and people with disabilities. These are the potentially eligible locations. You may recall seeing this when we presented this item to you before. This is for informational or purposes only. Development Services plans to up this map annually. But we do recognize that transit service changes and the responsibility will be with the applicant to provide documentation of current eligibility for their projects. Let's kind of brief recap on the policy considerations. The interim official control responds to the Affordable Housing Strategy, specifically Strategy B1, which is to, to encourage apartments around light rail stations. And then Strategy C5, which to reduce costs of building affordable housing, such as through code amendments or lower fees or reduced parking. The ordinance also responds to the COVID nineteen pandemic, which has slowed or delayed affordable housing and general housing construction. And lastly, the ordinance conforms the land use code minimum parking standards to state requirements in the RCW. So we've received twenty-some comments during, as part of the public hearing during the original IOC adoption. Today, we've released, we've received maybe a dozen or so comments right before the public hearing tonight. We have, all staff has also talked with a number of interested parties and developers. The general consensus is that the interim official control is a good step. And there is continuing interest to engage in the development of the permanent land use code amendment. The public comments also confirm council's previous direction to staff, which is to study four additional components to streamline and make decisions earlier for parking reduction requests. And to look at the, what is the appropriate radius from frequent transit service. Right now, we just a quarter mile, but council asked to look at whether half a mile or maybe something at pulse is an appropriate radius. Look at the downtown visitor parking requirements, whether that is still appropriate requirements there. And lastly, to look at if there's additional incentives related to parking to encourage affordable housing. Some upcoming steps for this item. Of course, council to hold a public hearing tonight and following the public hearing to consider approving this extension. If council does approve this extension, the East Bellevue Community Council will hold its public hearing and make an approval disapproval decision on that extension on December first. Staff is continuing to work to develop the permanent land use code amendment. And the land use code amendment will be processed by the Planning Commission. We anticipate the first study session will occur in January twenty twenty-one. So with that presentation, we wanted to just close by asking, by letting council know the direction that we need, which is to hold the public hearing. And following the public hearing, adopt the ordinance to extend the interim official control. That concludes staff's presentation. We're here to answer any questions either prior to or after the, the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Trisna. I think what we'll do is go ahead and have the public hearing and then we can ask questions and discuss. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So, City Clerk, are there any communications for this topic?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There are five speakers pre-registered to speak during the public hearing this evening. First, I would like to mention, as Ms. Tanis mentioned earlier, there were a dozen or so comments that have been included in your desk packet for this evening that were written comments to council related to this item. So our first speaker this evening is Randy Bannaker. And Mr. Bannaker, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Randy Bannaker here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors to encourage your support of the extension of ordinance sixty-five thirteen, the interim official control, reducing minimum parking standards for housing developments with access to frequent transit. You are employing a range of strategies to increase housing supply for market and income qualified housing. Reducing parking requirements is one of these strategies. And it is important and impactful. Structured parking is a major driver in multifamily housing costs. Where those housing developments have access to frequent transit, it makes sense to leverage the significant, the massive investments our region has made in rail and rubber tire transit by reducing parking requirements for people with easy access to these transit investments. This is both wise and greatly needed public policy. Every dollar spent on parking is a dollar not spent on housing, and we have a tremendous need for housing. So when we can right-size parking requirements by letting transit provide the trip to that resident and reduce the need for that person to own a car, we can reduce the cost of the housing unit and build more units. It's great public policy. Thank you for your work on housing. We wish to support you in any way we can.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Rachel Krynsky. And Ms. Krynsky, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Mayor and city council members, thank you for your time this evening and for your service. I am here also to speak in support of ordinance sixty-five thirteen and for the continuation of reduced minimum parking standards in the land use code for affordable housing. Lifewire is looking to develop twenty-five units of affordable housing for survivors of domestic violence who are coming out of homelessness. And like many other providers who serve homeless households, we don't need a lot of parking. Most of the households we serve don't own automobiles and can't afford them. And so requiring a lot of parking for those households is not a good use of resources for housing development. It is also not a good use of the space. We would much rather use space in a housing development to have play space for kids or to have office and community space for services than use that space for parking. And where appropriate, would of course also rather use it for more apartments, more housing units. And of course, you're also trying to regress density, which you'll talk more about on Wednesday. I am in, very much in support of anything you can do to reduce the parking standards where parking is really not needed for the residents of apartments because they don't have cars and because they can access transit. So I, we are in support of extending this and also in support of some of the questions you're asking, particularly the issue of perhaps expanding the distance from a quarter mile to a half mile or something in between as you look towards the permanent ordinance. And that is all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Matt Miller, we are now ready for your testimony. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. And thank you for your patience.
Perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening in support of ordinance sixty-five thirteen. It's born, it's been more than a year since Microsoft announced our $500 million commitment toward Affordable Housing Solutions in King County and our expansion of that program to bring our total pledge to $750 million. We've had many conversations with the mayor, with many council members and with city leadership around implementation of its 2017 Affordable Housing Strategies and ways the city can go further. Data from our continued collaboration with Zillow shows a gap of approximately 34,000 middle and low-income affordable housing units in Bellevue as of late 2019. And that does not take into account the staggering impact that COVID nineteen will have on housing supply and affordability. Simply put, those struggling to find housing they can afford need our help now more than ever. Now is the time for bold action and we applaud the city for continuing to prioritize housing policy and action. With this in mind, and as the city of Bellevue's largest employer, we strongly support ordinance sixty-five thirteen and urge the council to continue supporting this legislation. Reducing parking requirements for multifamily buildings near transit and with frequent transit service reduces housing production costs, especially for studio and one-bedroom units. We ask the council and staff to revisit this legislation in a year and see if further reducing the requirements is warranted and if the geography should be expanded. We look forward to continuing this work together as the year continues. Thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betty Hummer. Ms. Hummer, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. I am not supporting the reduction of parking at multifamily units. I have driven around my neighborhood here in East Bellevue and Lake Hills and seen that the market rate apartment buildings where there are, where there is reduced parking have parking all over the street. There's one right there at one forty-eighth and Main Street. And there, each unit has parking. It looks like they each have a garage, but there are multiple cars parked on the streets in the complex as well as on the Main Street. And then at the Summer Hill, at the YMCA, YWCA units, each parking spot was full. My big concern is also that the, what's called frequent transit isn't really frequent, and I'm afraid that it will be reduced due to the COVID impact. If a person lives at the YWCA apartments at one forty-eighth and Main Street and works down the street at twentieth at the Fred Meyer, it's faster for them to walk than it is to take the bus. And I think that that applies to just about to most of the, most of the apartment units that are around the so-called frequent transit. I don't believe that Bellevue really has frequent transit. They do have buses that for twelve hours a day run two to four times an hour. But they are what was commonly called milk runs and it takes forever to get from one place, like I said, just to go twenty blocks, it can take up to an hour. And it's, and it's not reliable. So I think it does a disservice to the people living in those apartments to reduce the, their modes of transportation by reducing the parking. I also am very concerned that among the council directives, we didn't see the one for having a parking study done. It doesn't seem to be included in this. And I'm also concerned about the combined impacts of this ordinance sixty-five thirteen with the other affordable housing strategies, including Strategy A1, which is to retain the affordable housing that are currently low market rate and convert them into subsidized housing or affordable housing. I think that will have a terrible impact on the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods surrounding these apartments, houses don't have any sidewalks. It will increase the safety risk to people walking in there and it's a detriment to the single-family neighborhoods that are close by. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. The final speaker this evening is Heidi Dean. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. I wanted to start by apologizing for my exclamation earlier during public comment. I thought I was muted. That was actually just meant for myself. Regarding this, the, the topic of the public hearing, I wanted to co-sign everything that Ms. Hummer said. I also wanted to point out that in my neighborhood, we have actually a tremendous amount already of low and moderate income multifamily housing. And it was interesting when I listened to Ms. Krynsky talk about the planned Lifewire units because we do already have a, a YWCA unit or, or complex for women who have escaped domestic violence. And I can tell you that every single one of those units has at least one vehicle associated with it. Quite often, they have two because of boyfriends that live there and sometimes up to three because of children of driving age. So reducing the number of units saying that people who are in that situation don't have vehicles is untrue. We also have the Newport or apartments that are, that have a, a quite a large number of low-income units there as well as market rate. And what's happening is we are seeing in Newport Hills in the last two years, three years, all of the parking from those two, actually three complexes have spilled out into the surrounding neighborhood. And we have streets that are crowded. Southeast Fifty-Eighth Street heading from the Chevron toward my house on One Seventeenth. You can't hardly get through it anymore because all of the parking has spilled out. So I was looking at the map of where a lot of this is located and it's interesting because it really does kind of target certain areas of the city. And I am a little concerned because I ask, you know, who's really benefiting from this? I understand the need that we, we need to build, you know, or retain affordable housing. But in lowering the, the parking requirement, who is it that's actually benefiting? As Ms. Palmer pointed out, it doesn't seem like it's the people it's supposed to be serving. It's not, it's not benefiting the residents who are going to be in the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted. So who is it that's actually benefiting by reducing these parking requirements? Where a lot of this is targeted, it does feel a bit like redlining. And I'm just going to say that. So I would encourage you to think twice and to continue studying this before putting this to a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends our list of registered speakers. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone else participating in tonight's meeting that would like to speak to the council under the public hearing. If so, please raise your hand. And I see one individual. Unfortunately, you're connected with a telephone, so I don't know your name. But can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can. If you could please start with stating your name. Your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Abigail DeWes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of NIAP, the Commercial Real Estate Development Association, Washington chapter, with many members in Bellevue developing housing and other types of buildings. We submitted a letter earlier today in support of extending the interim official control to reduce parking near frequent transit for affordable and multifamily housing. And I'd just like to reiterate a few points from our letter. This is a really, really important topic. Reducing the minimum parking ratios for housing in specific areas near frequent transit will help reduce the cost of housing overall and meet the housing gap that Matt, the speaker earlier, had pointed out for Bellevue. So we wholly support these changes. In particular, we would support staff direction to consider further reductions in the city's most dense areas like downtown and Bell Red, especially near the future light rail stations where transit service will be accessible and reliable and be a great alternative for residents who don't want to have a car. We would also support a policy that is forward-looking and incorporate those frequent transit areas that we know there will be improvements in in the future. So the map as it stands right now, we understand doesn't include the light rail stations, for example, in Bell Red. Projects that are in the permitting pipeline right now will be open and constructed at the same time that those stations are open and constructed. So we would hope that those projects could take advantage of this reduction now. So we think that staff should, should consider that as a policy direction as they move forward to incorporate these changes into permanent legislation. Thank you so much for your time tonight and the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And I would ask again, if there is anyone participating that would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. I do not see anyone else raising their hand, Mayor. That would be the end.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I can see you all. So can you raise your hand if you have a question or a comment about
about extending the interim official control? Okay, Deputy Mayor, I'll start with you. I got council members on. And I think Councilmember Stokes, is that true? Yeah. And Councilmember Robertson. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the great presentation. Do just two questions. One, on the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce had an issue. And this may have come up the first time this came around four months ago or five months ago when we signed on to this. But it's in regard to the visitor parking. Is that something that we should address in this, in this, in this ordinance? Or is that something that can be addressed later? I don't know. Staff can, can speak a little bit more to that.
Trisna, do you want to respond to your next question?
Yes, we, our staff is planning on looking at that and analyzing that element of the downtown code as part of the permanent regulations development. So that is on our list of.
It is on your list. Okay, so we can address that at some point then and evaluate that. Great. And then the, the other question I had was in regards to the two of the speakers during the public hearing on the, I believe was described as kind of redlining or specific neighborhoods or areas that would be looked at as having, you know, this, this ordinance take effect. And any thoughts to that? It seems to me this is really dictated towards the, you know, transit-oriented development. But just wondering if you had any thoughts on, on the concerns raised by two residents there?
So a quick response to that question, Deputy Mayor, anyone has. So the, the way the ordinance is set up now is based on a certain frequency of transit. Again, within a, within a radius. So it's constrained. There was a map that was part of the presentation that showed an example of those areas of the city where we have that frequent transit in those quarter-mile radius kind of circles around those spaces. So it would only be projects that are within those boundaries. And again, for each project, they would have to provide specific information to show that they have met that criteria of the frequent transit, what routes they are, frequency of, of that service, et cetera, to ensure that they met those definitions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mike. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, staff, for that thorough description. I did have a couple of things based on some of the speakers and information that we received. I, I agree with the speaker that talked about our maps being forward-looking. So if we're talking about metro transit, I think that's different than the light rail that we know that all the entire physical infrastructure is almost done. There are going to be another year of doing commissioning and testing. And we know when we're anticipating that to be open. And my sense is that anything that we're looking at building now, it won't get complete before the light rail opens. So I would like to make sure that our maps are reflective of what we know are going to be built as physical infrastructure. And so that this reduced parking really does reflect that. And I look forward to between now and, and May, having these and more conversations with our developer and neighborhood and community to really look at in the highest density areas. I do think we should be looking at what makes sense for the parking density may be different than the, the metro transit ones where the frequency may be fluctuating a little bit more. So I think it does make sense to look at that. And then on those fixed areas like the light rail, we should be looking at, is it a quarter mile or is it a half a mile that makes sense? Because again, those are fixed light rail stations. So we know that they're going to have the frequency that we're talking about. In fact, significantly more than two to four times an hour. So thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I'm kind of following up on what Councilmember just said. And I think it's important to, I, I really think this is, I really think we need to move forward. And I wanted to, I guess, just raise the question, could we, that NIAAP brought up, making sure that with the light rail stations coming, that we actually apply this in those areas. And it kind of ties into what Councilmember Zahn just said. I think just an increased awareness of where we can take advantage of this and not wait until something happens that, around it that, you know, we're kind of behind things. So just keep ahead of it and really look at every place we can do this and make sure we can have, have that happen.
Councilmember Robertson and then Councilmember Lee.
Thanks, Mayor. So just for the people that had commented, this is what the interim control that's in place right now in this action tonight, should we take it, just keeps it in place while the planning commission studies it. I think that that's a really important distinction because we, as a council, I think unanimously supported putting this interim control in place so that the planning commission could study it and create permanent regulation. I still support that work. I think this is a really important step for the city to make. So I have a couple of questions and they are, one, will the planning commission get copies of all of the input that the council has gotten as well as minutes from our public hearing tonight?
Trisna, would you respond to that?
Yes, thank you. I will. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson, for that question. We will be, those materials would be available to planning commission. I think we'd like to see how to best relay that information, whether we make copies of all of them or whether we summarize the, the content of all of those feedback. They would certainly have the benefit of understanding the discussions that council has had during the original adoption, that the public hearing of the original adoption as well as in this, this meeting tonight.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because we did give direction on things we wanted the planning commission to study at the, when we did this back in May. I think it's really important that a lot of the issues that were raised by the people commenting, both verbally and in writing, be, you know, conveyed to the planning commission because there's some scoping and input that I think is really valuable, particularly from NIAAP and the Chamber of Commerce as well as, I mean, Seattle for Grow With the Microsoft, et cetera, as well as the neighborhood folks, if people are concerned about this. That's one comment. Second, the East Bellevue Community Council, if they reject this on December 1st, it would still be in effect for the rest of the city, but just not in that area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, I know that. I just want to make sure that everyone else knows that. Finally, I, I do support the additional work items, particularly the parking study being allowed earlier in a development entitlement process, et cetera. And I also think that it would be useful to put on our longer work plan the look at parking requirements near high-capacity transit for office, not just residential. Because if, if an office is being used, it's right next to the light rail, they probably don't need as much parking. So, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that the parking is, study, parking issue, it's very important that the city should be looking into and at anyway. So I'm really glad that, you know, what Councilmember Robertson mentioned, this is an effort to really look into that. And in addition to the affordable housing, we want to make sure that the cost of housing is lower. We can accommodate more people living in Bellevue. I think this is all very important issues that council needs to pursue. So I think referring to the planning commission and so on, it's absolutely the thing to do. And I believe I S one, Councilmember, still supports this whole heartedly. But I'd like to follow up with Deputy Mayor Newenhouse's question about the neighborhoods. We heard a couple of people from the neighborhoods indicating some maybe concerns. So I would like to make sure that, you know, it's, it's real. You know, the, the way we live and it's going to change, especially with the transportation system. You know, making things affordable housing, all the issues will, will, will change. But we need to make sure, even though we focus on effort on making housing less costly, we're making sure we are meeting the, the requirements for, you know, housing developments, for building developments, for, you know, whatever developments that we want to do, as we have heard from the, the housing folks. And we also need to pay attention to how can we address the changes, the impact to the neighborhoods. So I think we need to include them into our study, into our, the planning department's, you know, work moving forward. So that whatever we do that may impact them, we know what to do to accommodate the changes we're going to be affecting. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rexdale, did you want to make a comment?
I didn't have anything beyond what was already stated in terms of support because I think it's important that we do produce parking guidelines to make room for, for more affordable housing. And that's such an pressing need in the community. So I support it.
Thank you. So, I mean, as I recall, we are simply bringing Bellevue up to the standards of the state. The state has already mandated this. And so we are going to match them and then have the, the, the planning commission look at other things that they might include in this. Is that correct? In this ordinance in terms of in transit-oriented development?
That's absolutely correct, Mayor. We did conform the interim official control regulations to those of the state regulations in the RCW. The planning commission will then be able to look at whether or not that, for instance, the distance requirement, if that's the appropriate distance that we want to have, if there are other ratios that we want to consider. But currently, as it stands now, the regulations in the interim official control conforms to the RCW.
So it's just, just, we're staying on course here. And we're just extending the ordinance so that the planning commission has time to do the review and make a recommendation. And I will just throw out, as a downtown resident now, this visitor parking thing, it is so hard to have your friends visit if you don't have visitor parking because on-street parking is usually only two hours at a time. And so I just, you know, I hope they're realistic when they're looking at the impacts of reducing, if they thought about reducing visitor parking, especially for older adults who have people who come and, and stay with them or do errands for them. So anyway, I know the planning commission will be taking comment as well. And people have an opportunity to weigh in. So thank you for all of this. I think we're ready to make a motion, Deputy Mayor.
Certainly. I move to adopt ordinance 6541, extending an interim official control adopted by ordinance 6513, which set reduced minimum parking standards in the land use code for certain housing developments located near frequent transit service.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Next, we're moving on to Resolution 9832. City manager, could you introduce that for us, please?
Yes, Mayor. This particular resolution number 932 authorizes the execution of the Public Safety Emergency Radio Network Operator Interlocal Agreement. And just by way of background, the council received a briefing on, it's also known as P-CERN, System Progress and Operator Interlocal Agreement, back on October 5th. This evening, staff will provide some answers to some follow-up questions that arose during that study session. And then we would request, we are seeking action this evening on Resolution 9832. So joining us this evening is Nathan McCollum, Deputy City Manager, as well as Chief Hagan with the Fire Department and Dave Mendel, Director of the Emergency Radio Communications Division of the P-CERN project. Without a turn over to Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. So that was an excellent introduction. I'll just pass it on to the chief and Mr. Mendel to explain the answers to the questions that were asked since the last council meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Manager McCollum. Good evening again, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Manager Miyake, and members of council. Next slide, please, Charmaine. Our purpose this evening is, I would ask you to consider the adoption of Resolution number 9832, authorizing the execution of an operator ILA for P-CERN. That's an acronym that stands, stands for Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. Next slide, please, Charmaine. I'd like to also reintroduce to you Mr. David Mendel from King County. And I'd like to draw your memories back to a study session on October 5th, when Mr. Mendel joined us and explained the progress on the construction of the new regional radio system, a little bit about the government structure and the timeline about the project and some of the finances. We were directed at that time to return this evening under other ordinances and regulations. And I would like to remind you that we did get some questions. Staff received those questions and some input from council members. And we would like to address those for you this eve. With that, again, I'd like to reintroduce Mr. David Mendel from King County to address those questions. And then I'll take the last slide. David?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members for inviting me back tonight. Over my shoulder right there, you might see one of my animals knocking on the door while I'm talking here. So my apologies for that distraction. I'll be addressing council member questions related to how the project is preparing P-CERN for the next round of technology. The organizations that we meet with on technology and the ways that we have positioned P-CERN to be ready for the technology environment 20 years from now. Project staff regularly attend several annual trade shows and participate in committee work related to radio communications and technology in general. This exposes us to current training, vendor activities, as well as technological development in the public safety communications area. I have project staff who are participants in several different technology forums. One of them is Region 43. And this is a statewide regional planning committee for public safety communications. They meet monthly and they discuss trends related to frequency allocation and licensing issues. This group consists of leaders in local public safety communications throughout the state of Washington. Similarly, we participate in a regional interoperability oversight committee called CAPSIE. This group is in charge of interoperability technology throughout the Puget Sound. And it consists of technical experts as well as operational managers. One of my team is the first vice president for what is known as the Motorola Trunked Users Group, or MTUG, which is an independent body run by users of Motorola equipment, not run by Motorola. MTUG is a national group of technical and engineering experts that provide feedback to the manufacturers to assist with technology development. We also work with an organization called the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. Our work involves coordinating frequency use for public safety communications throughout the state. As a reward for this voluntary service, we are also trained annually on developments in communications, as well as invited to their national convention consisting of technical and operational experts and exposing us to vendors who bring products to the show involving every aspect of public safety communications. Could we go to the next slide, please? The P-CERN project team has prepared the new network for the next round of technology by designing P-CERN to be digital, scalable, and to evolve with technological developments as they occur over the next 20 years. It is important to know that we can build off of what we have as future technologies emerge. I mentioned on the last slide our involvement with key national, state, and local committees. And this involvement is a key part of our work to stay knowledgeable regarding public safety communications. Not only are we concerned with technology, but one of the biggest concerns in any network today is cybersecurity. We have submitted P-CERN to an in-depth security review. And we will recommend that future. and we will recommend that the future operator perform periodic analysis of the network's security throughout the life of the system. So please know that security is also a part of our technical awareness. Personally, I think that it's a good idea for us to always be thinking about the future, how communications will support first responders. Because of this, my team will be working with our board members to discuss how we can keep an eye on the future, and we will ask the PCERN Operator Board to make this a part of their work plan once they are up and running. The project team and I greatly appreciate your time and thoughtful questions, and we hope for full council support of the interlocal agreement before you tonight. Are there any more questions that I can answer before turning over the last slide back to Fire Chief Hagan?
Um Chief Hagan, do you want to finish this discussion and then we'll open it up for questions?
Thank you so much, Mayor Robinson, I would summarize, I would uh reiterate that the request of the council to stop the resolution authorizing operator ILA for Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. With that, Mayor, I'm ready to discuss any questions, I promise.
Okay, thank you. So um I can see you all, and I know Councilmember Lee has some questions, I'm gonna let him begin, but uh who else would like to make comments or questions, if you could raise your hand? Actually, I don't see Councilmember Robertson for some reason. Um, there she is. Okay, so um whoa, you disappeared again. Okay, uh well, anyway, Councilmember Lee, why don't you start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh as you probably all know, I know I'm big on uh public safety. Public safety is number one, because this is what the government can do for people, for the public. And especially when you talk about the regional public safety, you know, uh public safety sees no boundary, you know, we all have to make sure that we are all safe ultimately. And uh we went through this my many years ago when uh the city of Bellevue Council were asked to support a three-hundred-million-dollar lab. And uh we find out at that time that uh we are working with the very old technology uh you using a radio system, and the only vendor in this technology is one company. And so we are, actually, the answer we get is, how do we know that's the right price, how can we be competitive, how can we keep the cost down? Because we all want to have the best, obviously, for public safety, because it's important. But to get the best, we gotta have all the best up-to-date, up-to-state, state-of-the-art technology. And we recognizing it wasn't, so we're struggling with it. But, you know, the fact is, we have to have it. And one example that, you know, we had challenges, that we at the time just had the uh school mass killing. And uh we know that, you know, communication system is like cellphone. Every officer in the street can respond to a school uh mass killing. Unfortunately, you know, by not having the opportunity to use a technology that's available, we have to go through a radio system, going through certain protocols because it is absolutely necessary because of the limitation of technology and all the uh parties involved, you know, you have to go through lots of limitations. Uh you cannot respond to a school's uh mass killing immediately, as when you have a technology available. So many years have passed, and we haven't really heard much as to what technology advance has have we been making. And I appreciate, you know, this PISA and uh APSICA that we are represented in in as an entity. This is all good, this is all necessary. But, you know, I just want to, when this presentation was made to us, and that's the first time we actually council has updated, and I had opportunity to ask, and so I'm sure the rest of the council, how are we keeping up with the technology? And uh so I haven't heard any response until, you know, uh we have this council meeting. And I appreciate uh Mr. uh Mendel. Uh he called me this morning, talked about it. And I think uh I talked to Nathan before, and he's also very helpful. Uh but I just want to emphasize, we all understand the importance of this, and I'm supportive, hundred percent. Especially this ordinance seems to have given us a opportunity to have a uh governing board, an opportunity to have a new agreement uh to do something, to do something, not just talking about, let's let's just having a lots of uh technology workshops, seminars, understanding what's available. We know technology is available, but we need to be focusing on, how can we apply it to our particular regional system in Pacific Northwest? So I think that requires, you know, transparencies, we need to know what's going on, we as partners. And I'm really glad that this new entity we set up on board, that would include Bellevue, you know, as a key player of this, I think we all need to work together, obviously. But we need to work together, know what's going on. You know, we we have to have a work plan uh by the board, uh through which that we have a proactive uh agenda, plan, priority. We have transparency that we are going to go after this. Uh we know that's going to be somewhere in the future, but it will never happen if we're just wishing it. We gotta have a step-by-step deliberate proactive plan to implement it.
Councilmember Lee, reminder, you're well over your three minutes, sorry.
Thank you, so I appreciate, this is what I would like to do, I would like to have us as the city uh participate and have the new uh board uh PCERN and to uh come up with the plan, you know, with the transparency, and then we have the accountability to make sure it will happen. So this is my recommendation, so I support it, but I really want to make sure you know, PCERN hears us and the city as we are represented, we need to move forward to make sure this becomes a reality, not just saying, well, it's nice to wish for, but we gotta take, actually, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So um I heard Mr. Mendel say that as technology improves, that they are gonna adapt, adopt the system. Um and maybe, I know Councilmember Stokes has his hand raised, maybe, do you want to address that briefly, Mr. Mendel?
Uh could 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 I ask you to say that one more time, I thought I heard you, but I want to make sure that I that I heard what you were saying.
Well, I believe what Councilmember Lee is emphasizing is the need to adjust the system as technology improves.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that is part of our of our plan and our ongoing operations, we have um a contract that allows us to update this network as new technologies come out. It is scalable, it is uh something that we can build off of, and it's definitely part of our plans.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stokes?
Okay. Yeah, mute, mute. Um yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that I think uh, and I appreciate what Councilmember Lee has been saying, but I think this, it's basically the questions that, you know, the questions have been asked and answered, and we that's exactly what is being planned, and I I think in October we heard that. I did want to mention too, and to to his point, that um it's important that everybody knows that the need and and uh the system has to be examined, and that's built into it. Uh this came before the Regional Policy Committee a couple of years ago, and they're working on this, and several several sessions, actually. And this was one of the big questions we asked at the time, was whether or not, and and Bellevue has represented on that. Um whether or not um you know, why aren't we just doing telephones again, or to, you know, that effect? And the answers were very clear and uh why, and how how was the best approach at this point? And it's very clear that this group will be looking to changes. The, one of the things that was a problem, the old system was that you really couldn't change, and this one you can. So I'm very confident that um uh Councilmember Lee's uh concerns are, will be addressed and already being addressed, and they're they're you know, right on, uh but I I think we're, this is where we're going, and Bellevue will have a big say in this, and um so I I'm very positive and ready to vote on this, and I I think, you know, this is a good conversation and and that's where we're going.
I may be the dumbest person in the world, but I have not seen anything.
Councilmember Lee, please don't speak out of turn, okay? No, just hold on there.
Question addressing through my side.
Councilmember Lee, there's other people wanting to talk, and I'll get back to you, come on.
Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Barksdale, did you have any comments?
You know, I I think it's um, I I appreciate Councilmember Lee's uh voice to make sure that we are um thinking about this critically, um I don't think I have any further comments beyond that, but uh before that. Moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that, um Councilmembers on, did you have any comments?
Yeah, my only comment is that I I appreciate Councilmember Lee's raising this concern, and as I'm looking at the the memo and the information that was shared by Mr. Mendel, uh it looks like the agreement adopted does have provisions in there for updates, upgrade and repairs. And so my only question would be, um is there some potential to actually establish some kind of a of a um a duration by which we would expect to see and and uh a replacement schedule, so it isn't this whole during the life of this, uh was it twenty, however long the period is, that there's no there isn't a a built-in mechanism to have this conversation about whether a replacement is now appropriate? If it's completely silent on that uh frequency, then there may be some risk that it doesn't happen. So does that make sense? Is there some provision in there that at least in X number of years, there's going to be a revisiting of of when it's appropriate to do a a replacement?
In in the interlocal agreement, there is not a clause that talks about replacement at the end of the life. Um that's where I was referring in my presentation here a minute ago about us bringing to the operator once it, once it is formed to uh make that part of their work plan so that they have a formal uh work plan that is transparent, that that people can see and they can be working towards the replacement. Within our project and the contract, we do have contractual provisions to update and upgrade the radio system continuously, so the upgrades occur every other year, and the updates are literally about every month. And that will keep the system fresh over the life cycle of it. I do expect sometime down the the line, there will be technological developments that necessitate other changes, and that's where you would start looking at replacement.
Okay, so I, so think, I just want to confirm, what so what I hear you saying is we do have things in place in the contract about upgrades every other year, and that the work plan is where the accountability would happen to address what Councilmember Lee brought up about bringing up the discussion about when a replacement would be appropriate.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. Uh Councilmember Robertson, did you have any comments? Or questions?
No, no, I'm I'm, I appreciate the conversation, uh we're certainly going to want to work on what the replacement's going to be before the end of the useful life of this new system. Um because we don't want to get behind again where we, like we did on this one, this one, we were supposed to have replaced this a few years ago. And I don't know if it's held together with bailing wire and duct tape, but it needs to be replaced, so I'm very supportive of moving this forward, and I really appreciate uh my colleague raising the issues to make sure that we are pro- more proactive uh during the course of this contract, so I'm I'm ready to vote, thanks.
So, thank you. So my question is just, uh Chief Hagan, is there, uh do you, would you recommend that we put in an assessment schedule of the system, that we would not wait till it's too late, or that we're um at on some regular interval assessing the system? To see if it requires, you know, if it's meeting the needs?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, I I think the ILA is good to go as one of the reasons I'm excited about this, I think about the first responder uh and some of the technologies that are going to be available. Um like creating technology, our radios helping to read apparatuses where advances in TV location.
Chief, Chief Hagan, I'm sorry, we were having a pretty hard time deciphering what you're saying, I think I can hear you, but just barely, I wonder if there's a better way to, for you to communicate?
That better?
That is so much better.
Okay. Um anyway, sorry, Mayor, to to answer your question, um I think the ILA is sufficient as presented.
Okay, so I know that they adjust it. Uh given the system that they have, they'll adapt it, but I'm wondering if we should even put something in there that reassesses the whole system to see if there's, they need a new one within this agreement? Is that a yes or a no?
I I would, I would think that would be not necessary.
Okay, so, thank you, so I'm gonna let Councilmember Lee speak one more time because I cut you off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, all these things are nice things to do, but we need, I'm I'm ready for action, we've been waiting for this for fifteen years. Yeah, I don't know, we're still working, working on the radio system, we can make the radio system as trouble-free as possible. By the end of the day, we're still depending on one vendor, with one system, that is not going to be compatible, it's going to not serve the community, because it's not the best system that would serve the need of the community, I just gave the example of school mass killing, okay? If everybody's got a cellphone, a a device on their hand, that not, actually, we can use two. Why do we have to go through a bunch of radios and going through all kinds of uh protocols and making sure that everything gets to the people who actually can get to this scene of, I mean, it doesn't make sense. And to do that, we need to have a program, a an action plan, that's that we're gonna do that, I appreciate what Councilmember Zon said, have a schedule. We may not get there, but that's fine, but at least we have, you know, I know that we 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 have to take out the existing system, as most of the time, that's going to be doing that, how do we improve on the radio? How do we make it work better, how do we make it, but it's still working on the existing horse, not the car, not the airplane. We can make the best airplanes, the best car there is, but it's not going to match up with the single-engine airplane, crap, that's.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mendel, I remember this coming up when you first presented a long time ago, and the reason that we are going to radios was because it was the most reliable form of communication, given the the event that cell phones aren't working.
Absolutely, i- in case after case after case with cellular technology, because so many people have those devices, as soon as there's uh some sort of a event, you know, whether it's a a killing or a Super Bowl parade, the systems just go down, they are unreliable, they they have not been able to be made resilient in those sort of situations, and first responders just simply cannot rely on that kind of a network, so that that's a huge part of why why we ended up doing another radio system.
Okay, well, I think uh I'm ready for a motion.
Move to adopt resolution ninety-three-two, authorizing execution of the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network Operator Interlocal Agreement. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you very much, resolution passes. Okay. So what is our next, oh, let's see, now we're on to the um I'm sorry, my notes are kind of broken up.
Here, it's resolution ninety-three-three, ratifying.
Oh, yeah, okay, gotcha. So um go ahead, Mr. Miyake.
Okay, thank you, so um in front of you this evening was added to your agenda, it is resolution ninety-eight thirty-three, ratifying and confirming the Civil Emergency Order establishing prohibited items um of October twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty. Um Kathy Gerla, City Attorney, provided um a lot of detail uh about the order itself. Um she is here this evening to answer any further questions you might have before you take action on it.
Okay. Okay, well, um, did you, just to answer questions, so let's go ahead and get a motion on the table. Deputy mayor, is there a motion to adopt?
Certainly. I move to adopt resolution ninety eight three three, ratifying and confirming the civil emergency order establishing prohibited items pursuant to the proclamation of emergency of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty.
I'll second. Thank you. Okay, are there any questions or comments? You just raise your hand if you have anything you want to ask or say. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, I, I support this action. I think that it was an appropriate decision, given the sum total of the information we had at the time. I appreciate Mayor Robinson, you interrupting a Saturday night to make sure that our city is looked after. Um, and I really wanted just to convey my gratitude to our police department, our fire department, all our departments, our legal department, who worked to make Saturday night a peaceful, safe experience for everyone concerned. I think without all that planning, we might have had a very different outcome. And it's hard to say, you know, it's hard to prove a negative, but I'm very proud of the work this city did and that we adopted this resolution or this, uh, this emergency for just the shortest amount of time possible. So thank you, everyone, for that. I will support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say a few things. I believe that this is a tremendous, a good work that this department has done. And the mayor, you have given the authorization to do that. Uh, then we are happy to rectify it. The reason why we did all this is because, you know, we have this government state of government system that makes sure that you take care of the emergency, but you still have to have us rectify to approve it so that you don't, you know, just appendantly do things on your own without proper justification and reason. And I think the chief police just made a tremendous uh, presentation today to us. You know, there's nothing more effective than, than prevention. That's what I always say, the police is the most uh, important and most neglected, most, the least appreciated people in, in our employment. You know, you only hear about it when something happens, somebody, some, some disaster take place, something, somebody got hurt, somebody dies, somebody has an accident. You know, when we don't hear about anything is because they are doing their job, prevention, prevention is the best. That's what they do. If you don't hear from them, that means they are doing their job. And I think this is what they're trying to do, and that's what they accomplished. So I appreciate the explanation that she played out so well. And I also sympathize with people who don't understand it all, including even sometimes us. We don't hear everything uh, until afterwards, but fortunately we do hear and we do see the results they bring to the city value constantly because we are such a safe city. We don't hear much about them and the bad things that happen. So we take it for granted. We do. But then we know through experience, through our evidence, through history, they, they, they are good, they are the best there is. So I think the chief made that point today, explained to a lot of people that I, I appreciate the public, they come and say, we went to the protest, nothing really happened. Absolutely. It, because they're, they're not, they're not part of the group that's plotting it. If they were, they would probably not be here talking to us, you know. So I really appreciate those folks saying that, but I think the chief made a good point. And the, the people should ask. I, I encourage them. It's a good thing to do. So gives us the mayor, the chief police, the city council, the opportunity to explain why certain things were done, why certain things, bad things did not happen because they did all the right things. This, you know, I mean, so we didn't need to give them the benefit, uh, not even given the benefit, but we need to have trust. That's the base principle of government, governance, basic principle of people living together. Uh, you treat each other well. We have trusting people based on what we've done, based on what bad things did not happen. That's the point, right?
Thank you, councilmember Lee. Thank you very much.
Want to comment, compliment, say that we'll continue to prove to the public that we have trust in our people. We give them the responsibility to, and hopefully will continue to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Um, councilmember Stokes, are you raising your hand or just adjusting your screen? You're raising your hand, okay. Yes, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments that have been made on this, and it was really, really great to have the chief uh, go over this. And I appreciate, and I hope the message got out, which he says all the time, is um, that uh, we have a dual role. It's not just preventing uh, bad things to happen to downtown or happen to the city. And, and we have a, it's a complex, very complex uh, situation. And um, I think it's important to get the message out and, and part of the confusion uh, this time was people really didn't understand what was going on. And it's hard to get communications out. Uh, people who came and talked to us about their concerns tonight, um, did not, frankly, the council didn't know uh, all the circumstances going on. So that makes it complicated. And we are in a situation um, just around us where there have been some really bad things happening between uh, different uh, groups and police departments and all that. So all of that is part of the context. So I think it's uh, you know, if, if we learn from this, it's a good teaching moment in a sense. And I think we approached it and learned a lot from it. And looking back in retrospect, it was done very well. And I appreciate that. And I'm hoping that we can uh, look at this and even do better in terms of communication to our community uh, and to people who have uh, and exercising their right to um, to protest and in a peaceful manner. And uh, separate these things out so people feel comfortable with that. And people don't want, you don't have one group saying, all we want is to be protected. And another group saying, we want to have our voices heard. I think we can make those two things go together. And I think this is a big step forward. And I really, uh, you know, it'd be nice if, if everybody could hear the chief's conversations. And I hope that gets spread around because I think that's important. So I'm, I'm very, um, I, I'm um, hopeful that we are really approaching a better uh, uh, approach, you know, a better way to deal with this in Bellevue. And uh, hopefully, we're not going to have any more big problems on it, but I'm sure we will. And I think we're much better prepared after this. It's just in retrospect, we see it better than when it's happening. That's always a problem. But a good job and I am looking forward to uh, or even doing better. Thank you.
Well said, councilmember Stokes. All right, are we ready for a vote to adopt the resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we have um, one more item, but I would like us all to be able to take a break. So um, we're going to take a five-minute break here. You can put your videos on and we'll come back at eight oh five, okay? Budget, I know that Tony, you can talk about it tonight, presented all the questions people had asked and answers to most of those questions. And so if there's any outstanding comments or questions from last week, I'd like to give people an opportunity to do that. And again, um, deputy mayor will be timing to make sure that we keep our comments to three minutes at a time so that everybody gets a chance to speak. So, um, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the topic tonight? Oops, I can't hear you.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Um, you teed it up quite well, mayor. And um, before we, um, I turn this over to the presentation to the staff, one of the things we are looking for is a direction to prepare an ordinance for council um, consideration and adoption when we take a final adoption of the the operating and capital budgets in December. Uh, but joining us this evening is Tony Callar, Finance um, and Management Director, as well as Mike Brennan, Director of Development Services, and Terry Jones, also the Fiscal Manager. And as with respect to the impact fees for the school districts, we have Thomas Mullins, the Director of Capital Projects with the, his across school districts, and Stuart Al Schusterman, Project Manager of Capital Planning and Construction for the Renton School District of, for a presentation later. With that, I'm gonna um, kick it over to Tony to start it off. And we go from there. Tony?
Sure. Is that?
Oh, you're not.
Okay, sorry. Um, I apologize. It was a back quote from this side. Uh, uh, thank you, City Manager Miyake. Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and deputy mayor and councilmembers. It's nicely back here this evening. I'm gonna ask Mike to pull up the PowerPoint and give a couple of quick opening slides, then I'll take over and give a bit of the agenda this evening and remind you where we're at, where we're headed. Uh, and then I'll turn it back to Mike. So, um, Director Brennan, do you want to take it on for a few minutes?
Happy to do that. Um, let me get the slideshow going here. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Robinson, members of the council. Uh, as Mr. Miyake mentioned, we are here uh, come for an annual update that occurs with the development services fees. Um, we will, at the end of our presentation this evening, be looking for council direction to prepare ordinances for consideration as part of the adoption of the uh, twenty twenty-one budget, uh, twenty-one, uh, twenty-two budget uh, for our development services permit fees and rates, uh, in addition to the school district uh, impact fees that are uh, charged by the Renton and Isakua School Districts. And we will be providing more detailed information on all of those topics in just a minute. Uh, the calendar, um, Ms. Call will uh, provide some additional information regarding the upcoming budget calendar. I'm gonna provide a very brief kind of highlights of the current development activity that's occurring in the city, uh, just for council information. Uh, we will provide, provide some specifics on the proposed fees and rates, uh, discuss the school district impact fees and how those are administered through our permit process and then paid to the school district or delivered to the school district. And then again, at the end, uh, seeking uh, council direction. So at this point, I will hand it back to Ms. Call, who can speak to uh, where we are in the council calendar with regard to the budget. Tony?
Thanks. So this first slide you see this afternoon is um, actually our overall calendar. It says that we started back in June with our budget workshop. You can see we're in the weekly study sessions now. We have a public hearing coming up on November twenty-third, and then tentative budget adoption is scheduled for December seventh. And next slide, please. And you will see that last week, uh, the city manager's preliminary budget was presented. Tonight, we have development services. We also have time on the calendar, as Mayor Robinson mentioned, for further follow-up. Uh, attachment E of your packet this evening has many, not quite all, but many of the uh, responses to many of your questions last week. If you have further questions or if you have other questions that have arisen, I'm happy to take those at any point in time. Next week, we'll be back with human services. We have a little bit of work left to do on uh, the CIP to bring back to you. Uh, utility rates will be here on November ninth, fire inspection fee November sixteenth, and then that public hearing on November twenty-third and adoption on December seventh. And with that, the next slide, uh, there's many actions that will require to adopt. The, the specific action that's in front of you this evening will be to get concurrence on the twenty-one uh, development services fee ordinances. With that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mike, who will go through the details of that.
Thank you, Tony. So just a, a few highlights of what's happening with development as this quite remarkable development peak continues forward even uh, as we are working our way through the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is really now in over a six-year duration since we really started ramping up uh, the, the, the change that's occurring across the robust construction investments continue to happen. We have a number of large projects that are under construction and many in the pipeline are still making their way through the permit process for both land use entitlements and then the formal kind of engineering and uh, building permit review. Uh, and uh, as really part of the city's growth strategy, uh, supported by the council, um, the most of that growth is really occurring in our growth centers in the downtown area and in the Bell Red area. This is a a photograph of the one thousand and one office project in northern part of downtown, uh, one of the projects that uh, Amazon has announced that they will be leasing. Um, additionally, the downtown um, is still very strong, um, in its growth. Um, we are still seeing uh, significant office development, uh, as council is very much aware. Amazon has made it an announcement uh, to move a number of their employees into the downtown over the next five years. Uh, this is a project, uh, the five-five-five office tower, um, right across from the transit center. This will be our first six-hundred-foot tower. That's the bottom of the hole. Um, they are now on their way up uh, with respect to construction of the base structure and the garage. Um, our office vacancy rate is at about, last reported at about four-point-three percent in downtown. So still um, significant amount of space for upside and all of the uh, as far as future office development and all of the projects that are currently under construction um, are least, uh, are mostly least. So um, certainly strong demand continues uh, in job growth uh, as anticipated in the downtown area. Featured office demand, um, as uh, you read about and talk to folks, um, certainly a significant amount of uncertainty of what the future looks like, not only from an economic standpoint, but also how office use will occur in the future. So we're staying in close contact with our uh, contacts in the business community as well as the development community, uh, to understand what they're hearing and seeing as we plan ahead um, for uh, growth in Bellevue. Um, again, the housing uh, development has really been focused, a, a lot of it in the Bell Red area, but specifically along our light rail uh, alignment. Um, as anticipated, it is very much a catalyst for future development in the city. Uh, we have right now, this year issued about five hundred and fourteen um, units of, of new housing development or multifamily housing development, expect permits issuing uh, issued before the end of the year, including another two-hundred-and-fifty-five more units. Uh, so we're still seeing significant demand um, in housing, um, which is a, certainly a, a critical need for the city uh, to have that housing occurring where those job growth, where the job growth is happening at as well. Um, we really, um, again, as I mentioned, have a significant amount of development happening across the city. We have about four, issued permits for about four and a half million square feet of development currently. And as we head into next year in the pipeline, there is an equivalent amount of, of development uh, in our future. So uh, just some really quick graphs, um, to give you a, a sense of the magnitude. As anticipated, this is uh, showing our, our, the actual volume of permits issued ranging from very small to large high-rise buildings. Um, but it gives you a, a, a sense for kind of the, the duration of this development cycle as we peaked out uh, in about twenty uh, fifteen, sixteen, and continuing to ride the top of that curve uh, with a downtick as expected in twenty twenty, as we slowed a bit in the spring, uh, as we're all responding to the uh, impacts from the pandemic. Uh, this was, this is the graph that is really quite striking. And this, this shows the value of the construction represented by the permits that we're issuing. Um, going back to twenty thirteen on the far-left bar to what we're um, forecasting on the far-right for the end of twenty twenty. Uh, the end of twenty twenty is um, you know, significantly above the highest that we have occurred, uh, or value of permitting that we we've issued in a year during this development cycle. So again, very strong demand uh, and growth in the city and a significant amount of work moving its way through uh, development services processes and staff are, are working very hard. So again, the, the response to the peak, um, a number of projects in the, in the review process, um, we were um, very um, agile, let's say, in responding to the impacts from COVID with the investments in technology that we've made over the years. We could continue to deliver services in our paperless permitting solution, um, even as we moved everybody uh, out of city hall uh, to remote work at home. Um, very small um, delays in uh, making that transition, um, almost seamless. So uh, quite um, happy and uh, with that remarkable transition, um, and proud of the team that uh, made that happen. Um, we are continuing to expand our use of technology to make sure that we are delivering the services as, as efficiently as we can to our customers. Uh, and um, in adjusting our staffing levels appropriately. And, and Mayor Robinson, last week you asked a question about the five FTEs that are proposed in the development services budget uh, going into twenty-one and twenty-two, and whether or not those positions could be supplanted by using consultants in lieu of. And uh, we use a range of different solutions just to respond to the demand. Consultants is one um, tool that we use. We have a number of consultants on contract. We use limited-term employees. And we also use full-time regular employees, which those positions uh, would be. We um, generally don't, we don't hire the positions until we have the workload and the revenue to support those positions. If it's a shorter duration um, kind of uptick that we're experiencing, we would generally turn to our consultants when we anticipate it's going to be longer term. Or we're seeing some potential for turnover in our staff as a result of retirements, et cetera. We usually go out and we'll fill those positions with FTEs. But again, we want to have positions available so we can move quickly when we see the demand coming. Uh, and then on the downside, um, we reduce our costs and reduce our staffing levels appropriate to maintain that alignment. So I don't, if you have, if you want additional information on that, more than happy to provide that uh, either tonight or at a future time. Um, so tonight we are going to, uh, moving to the fee, the proposed fee adjustments. Um, we There's some major kind of elements here. One is the purpose of this is to maintain alignment with our financial policies and our cost recovery objectives. We are going to be updating our hourly rates. There are fees that are charged based on the value of permits. Those are value of construction, excuse me. Those are our building permits. And then for large-volume permits, smaller but larger volume permits, we charge a flat rate based on an average amount of time that those permits take to process. So we'll be speaking a bit more about each of those here in just a minute. The financial management or guiding principles that we continue to manage the finances for Development Services through is that the funding structure needs to support the line of business through economic cycles. The majority of what Development Services does is paid for through the fees that are charged to our, our customers. The applicants, second bullet, should pay for the services that receive, that they receive. This is a fee-for-services model and has been successful for a number of years. That the fees need to be predictable and understandable. We don't want to have large fluctuations in fees. We want the fee structure to be one that, that people can understand and that we can explain. And thirdly, we keep an eye on our region to make sure that our, our fees are appropriately aligned with where our let's call it our competitive neighbors are. So we want to make sure that we are aligned in that way as well. So we keep our eye on that. The cost recovery objectives, very quickly here. The, on the left side, starting on the left side with the light blue boxes, public information, policy development, and the pre-submital support, kind of the early engagement is a, is general fund activities, general fund-supported activities in Development Services. So the land use code development work, for example, or people coming into the permit center, that, at that time, is covered by the general fund. As we move farther to the right, you start engaging into the cost recovery for the service. So discretionary or entitlements and land use are 50% fee-supported, 50% general fund-supported. And then as you move to the red boxes, where it's 100% fee-supported for engineering review or building permits, transportation, utilities, et cetera, inspection services, and then just the business functions for Development Services, permit processing, administrative support, technology support, et cetera, is 100% fee-supported activity as well and built into our rate model. So what I want to do now is turn the the presentation over to Terry Jones, who's a fiscal manager for Development Services, to walk you through more of the specifics on the proposed fee adjustments. Terry?
Thank you. Good evening. So the first adjustment we are proposing is the building fees adjustment. And the building permits use the value of the project to set the fees. So routine adjustments to the tables that set the fees are by CPIW. And for 2021, we propose adjusting the tables by CPIW of 1%. Next slide, please. Thank you. So our proposed increase to the hourly rates range from 1.6% to 4%. And this chart shows the proposed hourly rates for land use, transportation, fire, utilities, review and inspection. The rates increase by $3 to $7 per hour. And the factors that impact the rates include salary and benefit costs, inflationary M and O, and cost changes for our internal overheads, such as our general self-insurance and facility costs. Next slide. Next slide.
It clicked, but
Oh, sorry.
The post fees, thank you.
It's, it's slow. And for some permits, we charge a flat fee based on the average hours of review and inspection time. And the flat fee can change by the hourly rate and/or the average time. So because of this, some flat fees increase and some flat fees decrease. Shown are two examples. For land use review on a commercial mechanical permit, the flat fee increases by $5. And for right-of-way review on a street use permit, the flat fee increases by $6. A couple of valuation-based permit examples includes fees for all review and inspection work required to complete the permit. So in the case of a minor commercial project, the total change in fees is $87. And for the single-family addition of 500 square feet, the total change in fees is $96. And to ensure that we are regionally competitive, we've compared our fees to our neighbor jurisdictions. The chart shows the fees for a 500-square-foot family addition. The light blue bar is the proposed 2021 fee, and just below it is Bellevue's current 2020 fee. Bellevue fees fall in mid-range, where the King County and Seattle fees are higher. Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah fees are lower. And Seattle, King County, and Bellevue are the jurisdictions with full cost recovery objectives for the permit fees. And Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah costs, the permit costs are part of their general fund. So last chart is another comparison of valuation-based fees for a minor commercial project of $250,000 valuation. Again, Bellevue proposed fees are the light blue bar and also fall in the mid-range where the county and Seattle fees are higher, and Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah fees are lower. So turn the time back over to Mike.
Thank you, Terry. So just a few comments about the school impact fee update. So the school districts of Issaquah and Renton both use impact fees to pay for their capital projects. An impact fee, they're set by their, their school boards within the school district boundaries within their jurisdiction. Essentially, they're a pass-through fee for us. So we, the city collects the fee when residential construction is occurring within those district boundaries. And, and we collect it during the permit process or when we issue the building permit. Those fees are then directly transferred over to the school district, either Renton or Issaquah, where those projects may be, are being constructed. Bellevue doesn't retain any of the, of the, of the impact fee that is collected. Again, those fees are what are used to support their capital programs. And we do, as Mr. Miyake mentioned, have two representatives on the call this evening, one from the Issaquah School District and one from the Renton School District, if you have questions for them. So just to give you an idea of where in the city the school district boundaries kind of cross over, the city boundaries in the lower-right corner of this map is a little challenging, but in the lower-right corner is the Renton, or excuse me, the Issaquah School District or ISD. It's the Lakemont area of the city down to almost Lake Smamish. And then in the far lower-left corner is a small segment of the Renton School District that overlaps with the city boundaries of Bellevue. And so projects that are permitted within, residential projects that are permitted within those school district boundaries would be subject to the applicable school district impact fees. So this, and the impact fees that they're charging aren't different based on their program needs. The Issaquah School District's single-family impact fee, this would be for a new single-family home, would be 18 proposed, is going to be $18,213 in 2021. That's a $3,712 increase from 2020. Multifamily going to $12,043, an increase of $2460. And likewise, the, the Renton School District is increasing their impact fees for 2021 to $7,681 for a single-family home, and for each multifamily unit, $4,998. So that's a quick overview of the proposed fee, impact fee adjustments that the school districts will be, that have set. And again, we would collect those fees through our process and transfer that revenue directly to those school districts. So that's the conclusion of our presentation this evening, Mayor Robinson. We are again seeking council direction this evening to bring forward ordinances to implement the proposed amendments to the permit fees and rates, as well as the school district impact fees, which are covered under separate ordinances. We are available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to take questions and comments on the Development Services permit fees and the school impact fees only, to begin with. And I am trying to get my view of everybody. There we go. Okay. I see Councilmember Barksdale, and then Councilmember Lee, then Councilmember Zahn. Let's start with that. Councilmember Barksdale.
Okay, Councilmember Lee had his hand up before mine, if you want to. I'm happy to defer to him.
He will get his chance.
Okay, all right. I just had a question around, for the Development Services, you had mentioned might reducing the staffing as needed, and wanted to know if there was funding built in to the fee structure. And I, I'm curious about what that looks like in terms of frequency and sort of like what is there some way to cushion that or what have you? And if there's money factored into Development Services to help manage that in a way that is equitable?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Barksdale. That's a great question. We didn't kind of share the whole, the whole financial structure here. But yes, so we do retain a reserve that helps us through development cycles. So what the reserve does is a few things. It does what you just described. It allows us to retain the talent and expertise that we need and that we've developed through down cycles, so that they're with us as we, we return on the upside. But it also, it also allows us to maintain kind of moderate rates, meaning we don't have big fluctuations in rates. As the development activity drops and increases, our rates stay relatively consistent. We adjust by inflation and some other upward pressures over time, but we don't have big spikes. So that reserve, that Development Services, our fund, has a reserve for the purposes of maintaining a core staffing complement as we go through down cycles. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Mike, there's a chart that shows application versus approval projects. Can you go to the chart, please? It's the first two or three.
Got it. The chart. Let's go.
My cell phone is talking to me. There you go. There you go. Permit volume, yeah. Permit application issue. Throughout the, the last few years, you know, obviously, the issue would be following, you know, with lower, with a gap between application and issued. I noticed the gap is increasing from 2018, 17, 18, 19. Why is that? Just curious.
So what happens, the, the larger the gap, the, the larger the backlog that's in the system. So when we see that gap growing, which we did in 2017 and 2018, you may remember back then, Councilmember Lee, we, we came in and asked for a number of new positions to help us keep pace with the development to, to bring that gap back down, because the larger the gap gets, then performance starts to erode. So we want, kind of, we need to watch that very closely. This is just one very high-level metric, though. There are a lot of things that we look at when we're looking at performance and where we need to add resource, consultants or new staff, et cetera. But as you'll see, as we're moving through this year, we're bringing that gap closer together and anticipate that that will occur as we head into 2021. But we always want to have some backlog in the system, because if it comes together, that means we have more capacity than we need, and we need to start downsizing, which also means we're probably not bringing in as much revenue.
Well, thanks. Yeah, but I just asked because I want to be sure that the gap doesn't increase because you guys are striking off, not as efficient.
Yeah, I can hear.
That's the opportunity, that's the opportunity for you to come to City Council, talk to City Manager. Hey, we need more people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, Mike, for that very thorough presentation. I was thinking about how fortunate we are that we went 100% electronic on our permit and our inspections with COVID. So hopefully, that is helpful as you look at the staffing. The other one is that we're doing cost of services studies. I think those are really important to set the rates to market. And then thirdly, I really want to applaud you for the fact that the pre-submital and the informational sessions are fee-supported. Because I think that the ability for anyone coming in to get that early discussion means that hopefully there's less work and rework for both the developers or folks trying to build here, as well as the staff having to do rework is the most frustrating part. So I really want to highlight that, because I think that's an important thing that you do, that is very, very important. And then lastly, on the, on the resource loading and really trying to, to have the right amount of resources, balance of FTEs, limited-duration consultants, I'm wondering if we have considered, because earlier we talked about mutual aid. So ILAs with other building officials, so that as we see that we are, we have people available, that maybe some of our folks could be available to some other cities, especially since we've gone through the, the interactions with Sound Transit on building light rail. There's many other cities that are going to be moving into that place. So if we had people available, and then vice versa, that for those communities, maybe where they're in the slump due to COVID and they have capacity, they don't want to let go of anyone. Do we have that kind of an ILA in place? And if not, can we get one started?
So that's a good question, and we have experimented with different solutions over the years with our neighboring jurisdictions, including having an ILA. It's a challenging, a couple of things that make it challenging. One is that the workload or the development activity that's happening is not just Bellevue, but it's happening in Kirkland, it's happening in Redmond, et cetera. So we're all experiencing the same kind of growth pressures or needs at the same time. We don't see it drop off in one city, and so that, that's one challenge. Also have labor agreements that you need to deal with and, and, you know, liability issues cross jurisdiction, working cross jurisdictionally, et cetera. So we, we've done a lot of, of experimenting there and have had some limited success over the years. But I can say where we've had great success, and I think it is a benefit in a resource way, is sharing expertise and talent across jurisdictionally. We work very closely with our mybuildingpermit.com regional partners, working on products that we all use together. So it's working on paperless permitting, it's working on our, our mybuildingpermit.com portal. It's creating tip sheets for inspections, it's creating information for new code changes and technical work that's being done. So we benefit, I think, that way by sharing cross-turistically that kind of expertise in creating products, and we found great success there.
Well, I would just say, keep considering this as a concept, because I would say perhaps in other areas, we might not have started out with mutual aid and ILA because of some challenges, and we were able to work through them. So I would just encourage you to keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hey, Councilmember Stokes, are you raising your hand? I don't see your hand. I just see your shoulder move. So, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a very, very good presentation, and it's really great to see the news and the one chart where we're going way up, and it's just amazing in this, this time period. The one thing I wanted to comment on is on the, the charts about the regionally competitive, both, both pieces. One of the things that I think is, this is a small part, but it has a, a positive effect on how Bellevue is being able to go through this pandemic and, and all the problems with this recession caused by COVID. While our neighboring cities, particularly when we look at Issaquah and some of the others, are struggling with the impact of, of growth. And they're not, their budgets have really been, been whacked because of that. And you look at this, and, and this is one thing it adds to it, you know, that it's a huge difference between what we're charging, you know, for $3,000, and they're charging $1,700. And, and so that's, that's and I, I know the reasons why they, they get to that place, but I do think it's important that we're having reasonable and a, and a good, solid cost on that, and it's not as much as King County or Seattle, but it's something I think that's appropriate, and it actually helps us do more of the growth, paying for growth that people particularly in the neighborhoods want to hear. Obviously, it doesn't always in the short run, but when you don't recover funds at the, and have funding at, at the beginning, and you have growth, it's very difficult, because all the things you have to do. And then your budgets really get in trouble when you have a recession. So I commend your foresight in doing this, and certainly I know it's, and, and I think our, you know, development community is very happy with the way I know it's and I think our, you know, development community is very happy with the way we process things, the way we do things. So I think this is appropriate and I'm glad you're you take a look at that and and are willing to raise that where where necessary. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a quick comment. You know, I I couldn't help but notice that Issaquah's development fees are really, really low. But their school impact fees are really, really high. What's going on with that?
Well, I I don't know that I have enough inside knowledge to really speak to that. Again, the the city operates, but I will just say the city operates like we do. They issue permits, conduct inspections, etc. The way their funding structure is set up, what I know about it, it is funded through the general fund. So their fees go into the general fund and we operate kind of like a business when it comes to Bellevue. The Development Services kind of line of business, we call it, we've got to operate within bounds of the revenues that we are generating and but making sure we're delivering that high quality of service. So it's that balancing act that we do. So the cities like Kirkland, Issaquah, Redmond, they budget differently than we do. And so they're not in the same place as far as being agile or quick to respond to those fluctuations like we are. And that has been very beneficial over the years and the council's support has has really, really helped make that happen.
Well, do we have any say at all on the school impact fees that we pay to Issaquah?
So those are set by the Issaquah School Board and Renton School Board within their jurisdiction. So the answer to your question is, no, we don't have any authority there.
What if we say no?
You're getting in past where I can respond to the question. I would have to go, we probably, Mayor, we would probably have to follow up on that. This will be coming back to you later if you want us to explore that.
I'm just curious. I mean, I think people look at this and wonder the same thing that I'm wondering. It's it's just quite, quite, you know, quite a contrast in what they're charging themselves versus what they're charging a neighboring city. So I'm just trying to figure it out.
We do have representative on the call this evening in the meeting this evening from Renton and Issaquah. We could ask them to speak to that or we could follow up later.
Well, we can follow up later, but I I think that would be good information to have.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, are there any more questions or comments on this? Yes, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mike Terry-Grippe presentation, as always, thanks so much. And Mike, I don't see you get flustered too often there, but I think the mayor no, great conversation, a lot of great comments and most of my questions have already been answered. I just had one for you in terms of of outreach and have you already talked to developers about the proposed increases and what sort of feedback? You may or may have not gotten the the, you know, the the increases seem reasonable to me, but I'm not paying them. So would like to get your perspective on that.
So we did reach out to the master builders, inform them and generally push out to our contacts in the BDA. I'll have to confirm whether or not we've received any response back and ensure that they got the information. But we'll make sure that everybody's aware that these fees are being raised. I think what I hear mostly is the that the fees that we charge are, as long as they're reasonable, increases are are fine as long as the service is predictable and delivers their need because that value is is where their head is, what matters the most to them. Making sure that predictability is there. But yeah, certainly we will make sure, I will make sure that we have notified the appropriate parties out there so that they're aware of this.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do a motion for this part of the discussion and then we can go on to the the council information requests.
Certainly, I move to direct staff to prepare ordinances that amend the Development Services permit fees and Issaquah and Renton School impact fee schedule for council consideration and adoption at a future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. So now I'm going to open this up to a broader discussion about last week's presentation on the budget and you have in your packet the council information requests that Tony provided answers to most of the questions that we asked. And so I'd like to give everybody an opportunity if they have any additional questions. You don't have to ask questions. I just want to give you the chance to if you have them. And we'll give each council member three minutes at a time. We can just move around. So if you want to raise your hand and let me know if you have questions or comments and Councilmember Stokes, if you raise your hand, raise your left hand. Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any. So that's that's great. Okay. Well, we have regional issues in our packet. I hope that you will all read it. It's been very thoughtfully written by by Joyce Nichols and she has some good information in there. And we are done with the meeting. Council meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.